We're ready to get started now. Very much please take their seat. Have our public service announcement in case of an emergency for everyone who needs to exit the chamber, you can already let stairwell proceed to the ground floor to exit the building to allow for emergency personnel to enter. We also have a sign up sheet at the podium. Anyone wishing to address the council at the public speaking portion of the meeting will sign up at the podium. Thank you very much. Let me call the committee board, 7/36, December 1st. Everyone please rise from the platform. Thank you. Please sit where we're going.
Alderman Chavis. Alderman Satch. Alderman Will. Alderman Dawson. Alderman Carey. Alderman David. Alderman Mills. Alderman Chavis. Alderman Brown.
Thank you. We have a forum. I get a motion suspended with the minutes of the previous meeting and to approve same. You have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Interim group, nine zero. I get a motion suspended with the reading of the general bills.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Adopted, nine zero. We're now going to the board's presentation and I would like the members of KingstonCitizens.org, please come up by the podium and I'd also like to the guardian here, minority here to come up, please.
I'm gonna get the opportunity to the guardian here to say a few words before I give you a press conference. Go ahead. Do you want to mic? I just wanna say, thank you to Kingston Citizens. The work that you did this year deserves extraordinary, the work you did this year was extraordinary. You brought the Niagara issue to the table. You identified this as an issue to the common council. We then took action because of the work that you did. We were educated because of the work that you did and we ended up taking some bold actions throughout the year and at the end of the day, you helped us to amend our charter by an overwhelming majority and organizations like yours deserve recognition for the work that you do because we just appreciate that hard work and it deserves the utmost recognition and we need more organizations, people and businesses like you to do actions like this and help us do our job and we look forward, and I hope the council continues this in the future, to recognize other organizations, businesses and individuals who accomplish extraordinary things. So, thank you.
She took one that called me aside one night and we discussed it and it just, you just took over. You do a lot of the work for us because we're so busy and I really appreciate that and you kept us informed. You let us know different meetings we're on. You did the research and you emailed all of us and like you said, came with fruition and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd like to present the Pride of Kingston Award 2015 presented to the KingstonCitizens.org in recognition of their hard work and dedication in protecting the city of Kingston's water supply. President James Nolan is on campus. Thank you, I'm the head of the city and the council. I really appreciate it.
Well, this is a great surprise, a wonderful honor. All of us here, and there's more of us who couldn't make it this evening, enjoyed it so much and the Niagara proposal was a huge education for all of us and one of my favorite parts to it is complex is that we is to help and to collaborate with our elected officials and to forge partnerships and collaborations which we accomplished and we're continuing on that path to do that work, I'm seeing with the building pipeline and we thank all of our elected and appointed officials for including us and allowing us to be part of the process. So, thank you from all of us.
We will now enter into the public speaking portion of the meeting. The council has set aside a thirty minute allotment time for this purpose. When you're at the podium, please give your name and address for the record and try and do it as brief as possible. And also directly comment to the chair for the involvement and education thing. Thank you. First speaker, please.
Joseph Alton. I'm here to talk about the budget. Good, it's the banking, I'm all right, thank you. I can use that microphone. And I'm talking about two positions in the budget that have no net worth and zero value and command a one and a half percent or one and a half points on the city fiscal budget, which amounts to about a million and a half. I'm a senior citizen. I live on a fixed income. I pay taxes. I'm watching where my taxes go and they don't belong to this job, these jobs. Also, the justification for keeping these positions was it's a quality of life issue. It's absurd. Quality of life is the police department, the DPW, the fire department, which has to raise rates so they can do something extra. If you vote for this budget with these positions in it, you are shucking the fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers and we all know why you're keeping these positions, okay? We do not need them because Cornell Corrigan Extension provides these services where they, where the non-credit education field, economic department, environmental qualities and human potential, these are things they can teach. We, as a municipality, are not in the school business and these positions, both of them, should be eliminated from our budget because it's a great deal of money and we're not getting anything for it. It's zero net worth. We don't even get funding for grants to cover these positions. That we have to have students at ten dollars an hour mining the kids in the Hodge Center and no one's there and we're paying fifty-three thousand, sixty-five thousand, whatever. These positions do not belong here, right? We're holding you all to a highest standard and I'm gonna be watching the whole papers not take notice who votes for this budget. Thank you.
Thanks everybody.
I can't read the second name. Whoever was the second person to sign up, let's see if I can start.
Hi, my name is Erin Clay. I'm eleven years old and I've been going to the Read and Write program.
Can you hear it? Can you hear me? Just speak up a little bit.
Hi, my name is Erin Clay. I am eleven years old. I have been going to the Read and Write program for three years. It has been beneficial for my grades. I am really becoming a better student because of this program. I am an honor student. I want it to stay permanent so everybody can learn and I want everybody to support. Thanks.
Calazo.
Hi, my name is Edith Calazo. I live in sixty-seven East Bryant Drive. I'm here about the Read and Write program actually. I'm a single mother with my daughter, she kind of difficulty with three and she joined with Rita, which during the summer, she did Read and Write program, which is building right now. Now she's an honor student, which thanks to the Read and Write program, I'm just hoping that she continues on the Read and Write program, you know, just as this young kid, you know, they need the learning skills today.
Next speaker, please.
Liam McDowell.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Keel McDowell and the reason why I'm here, I don't live in the Kingston area. I don't live in the Kingston area, but I moved here from the city sixteen years ago and what I've noticed is that there are a lot of people, even adults, in this community that are not educated and I've always been interested in education because my mother came from a family of eleven children and she became an attorney. My uncle was a doctor. They always had gone to the upward ground programs in the community where they grew up, so education is very, very important. These programs are important for children that are growing up in deprived communities. We need to educate our children so that they can have a better life, be successful and be able to accomplish something. I notice here that there are a lot of adults that can't read. I have two businesses. My first business is a tax office. The people that come and sit at my desk, they cannot even read the tax papers that I present to them. I have to read them. These are adults that have gone to Kingston High School. The children in this community are gonna be deprived if they don't have the read and write, the programming for education. I think that's key. We don't have an upward ground program in this community. Luckily, I don't live here. My son, but he also participates in the programs. A lot of kids I know, families I know, their kids went to college. They speak very highly of this. The woman that I met at the Hodge Center was an older Afro-American woman when I first moved here. She had a GED program and several of the women that came to my office, I led them to her. They now have GEDs and they went to school. Some of them are CNAs and LPNs. We need education for the women in this community as far as war for is concerned. I think that also if they can extend it in other parts of Kingston, they need some type of educational program as well to help people that are unprivileged so that they can have some type of future.
Mary Strout. Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've lived in Hudson Valley for over thirty years. I lived in Kingston for about ten years and still own property here. I'm here to speak about the program Pipeline, but I also wanna give a shout out to Teresa. I didn't even know this was on the agenda. I actually worked with Teresa in the Read and Write program over twenty years ago and her dedication, her skill and her loyalty to the community and the children of this community is stellar. And it's something that I'm truly proud of and I hope that you have, I know the kind of faith, I have the work she does because I've worked with her, I've seen it, I've been there with her, support. I'm here to talk about the program Pipeline. So professionally, I'm mostly an environmentalist more than a former teacher and I've worked for the county department, the environment, I was on the town of New Paltz environmental board, active in a group that's working on climate change down in New Paltz. I'm here to urge you in the strongest possible terms to stand up for the Hudson Valley communities, including Kingston, including New Paltz, all along the throughway and not let the dog, not let the throughway authority be the fox in the hen house, which is really how I see it, given my understanding of how the secret protocols work. You really want some transparency and some accountability and the D C is the correct agency, not the throughway authority. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Will you please give your name and address for the record?
Teresa Thomas Washington. Hello, my name is Teresa Thomas Washington. I live in Kingston, New York, two eighty-five East Strand and I'm here to talk about the kids in the community and their needs. I run the Read and Write program. I've been running the program for twenty-two years now and the need is still there for the kids. This summer, let me say this first, when you look at a child, you can't tell whether they can read or write. You can't tell whether they can read. You just see a kid running around playing and you don't see their struggles, but when they come to me and they sit down before me and start struggling to sound out the word "see", "the", "it", "act" and they're in fifth grade, then you realize that there is a difficulty in this community with the kids. This summer, I served at the Roundell Neighborhood Center downtown. We had a hundred and three kids in the program. They read every single day and they did some writing every single day. They did many other things, but the main thing they did was reading and writing and we had twenty staff, so the kids were able to have somebody sit next to them so they could read out loud, you know, so we could know where they're struggling. We always had the kids read out loud. So, they were able to sit and read out loud and the kids that could not read, because we start at four and a half going into kindergarten, those children were read to. On the report cards, every single period, market period, the teacher sends home a report card that said, tell the parent to read with the children at least fifteen minutes a day. So, if the school and the teachers are telling you that, we know that is one of the most important thing that is needed. So, what I am here hoping for, because I struggle, I've been struggling for twenty-two years with funding and getting money to keep this program running, not for myself to get paid, because I do not get paid. I have to make sure my staff get paid though, because they won't come back, even though we have a lot of volunteers, but if there is money that is available to make this program permanent, you know, on the books, permanent, so I can have a better staff there for these kids, because they're not just kids, these are our kids, because it says it takes a village to raise, so that means that they're all your kids, all of your kids here and it's not uptown kids, it's not downtown kids, this is Kingston community kids. So, although I work at the Everhodge Center right now with Read and Write program, downtown kids also, you know, need that help. So, I'm asking you today to look at our situation, know that the majority of the kids that we work with are two and three grades behind in their reading level. So, the further they go on, the harder it gets for them. So, if we can catch them now with your help, saying we want this program, you know I'm here, I've been here twenty-two years, we want it to stay and you can have an opportunity right now to say, okay, we'll put it in, but right now, we'll make sure this program is gonna be, have some funding every single year. We don't have to scrounge and cry and beg and plead to get something that we all know that we need for our children, so they can be better citizens and better people in the community, so they can get up and do things for themselves, they could, you know, it's, the saying is, if you feed somebody, they won't go hungry for that day, but I say, if we teach the kids to read, they can go out and get their own jobs and they can feed themselves, they can buy, have their own play days, they can go on their own trips because they don't afford to do that. So, I'm just asking, at the end of the day, when you make your vote, you know, know that it's more than one place, there's a whole community of Kingston kids that need help and program. So, that's what I'm asking you. Thank you.
Carrie E. Gray. Good evening, can you hear me? Good evening, everybody. Carrie Lua, actually, it looks like Leroy. I'm from seventy-four Broad Street, West Hurley, but I also was an educator for many, many years in the Kingston School District. I was really almost in charge, I would say, for literacy for the district as a reading recovery teacher leader and I trained our reading specialists in Kingston and actually afford faculty, so I consider myself having a lot of expertise in literacy. I've also been a volunteer with Teresa for many, many years. What all the research shows is, the best way that children can learn and accelerate their literacy, which is their reading and writing, their comprehension, is by having individual tutors who have some knowledge work with them and that is the very foundation of the Read and Write program. As much as possible, we try to have every student with an individual tutor. When that happens, you see, as you see with this young man, a great deal of growth. How do you get individual tutors? Well, I know a lot of retired teachers, one of them is C R A N and myself, we volunteer, Teresa has a lot of volunteers who have had a lot of experience with children, but the wonderful part of the program, we have children, some of whom were with me when they were little, who now tutor in Read and Write and they get paid to do that. They've come such a long way, they've closed the gap, they're way up there, we're sure they're gonna do well in life and here, these kids are learning to give back and it's often their first job. So, we're at the Hodge Center right now, but Teresa has a vision, as all of us that work with her have, that that's not enough. We'd like better staffing at the Hodge Center, but we also want to expand to the neighborhood center in the Roundell. Those kids are underserved and they need service too. The city has a potential to reach some of the children that are most in need here. Believe me, you hear about the Kingston High School and the fact that the graduation rates aren't high enough. We can make a big impact if we begin to reach children early and we expand this program. So, what I'm asking you to think about tonight is, we need funding to do this and I understand that this funding around, the first gentleman spoke about some funding, we want you to consider giving this program a good chunk of that funding. That is the best investment that you could ever make and I also wanna say, it was such an honor of working for the Kingston City School District, so thank you for allowing me to speak.
Next speaker, please.
I come before you all this evening as a resident of the city of Kingston, I live at one oh one Wilson Avenue and also as your mayor-elect. I wanna first thank each and every one of you for the budget process. I think that it was a very long process for all of you. There were many late night meetings and I wanted to thank all of you for your hard work in that effort. I also want to say that the budget, as presented by the finance committee last week, is a welcome departure from the proposed budget that you were firsthand and I, you know, as proposed by all of you and as passed out of committee last week, this budget provides my administration the tools necessary to make sure that we can move forward all of the worthwhile projects that are currently happening and that we would like to see finished in the new year. This project, this budget also allows my administration the flexibility to change the way we do business in the city and for that, I believe that this is a good budget. And I know that this process has been challenging. I know it has included many late night meetings and it has really kind of come to this part, you know, with a great deal of compromise, but I do ask that this evening, you take the opportunity, as you did in your finance committee last week, to pass this budget, because I do believe that this budget covers many of the issues that we all care about. It delivers the high quality services that we need to be able to provide to our residents and it also provides an opportunity for the new administration to be able to work with the budget and be able to create a really great foundation in 2016. And so with that, I hope that, you know, all of us will have your support tonight in moving the city forward and continuing the good work that the city and all of its departments have been doing and really be able to create a new paradigm for this community. So, thank you very much and again, I hope we all have your support.
Next speaker, please.
Rebecca Martin. As Justice for Reed Kingston, in anticipation of the time that the In anticipation of the time that the Pilgrim Pipeline would come into play in the City of Kingston, our common counsel in January 2015 approved a memorializing resolution in support of a memorializing resolution of the Kingston Conservation Advisory Council's recommendation to oppose the proposed Pilgrim Pipeline. Almost ten months later, on November the sixteenth, the Thruway Authority sent out lead agency letters to all involved agencies in secret as it pertains to the Pilgrim Pipeline project. Kingston, by the way, is one of only three cities in the state of New York who is an involved agency in secret in this case. The other two are Albany and New Bern. I was pleased when the Kingston Conservation Advisory Council and our Public Safety Committee were able to work together again with limited time to present, discuss, and move through another memorializing resolution, declining the Thruway Authority's request. With only a thirty-day window to make a decision about lead agency, you all have had to act swiftly, and you all did, hitting this critical mark, the deadline of December the sixteenth. Along with our mayor, who sent out letters also declining the Thruway Authority and instead requesting that the D E C take on that role, we will be the first involved city in the New York State to do so, illustrating once again the cooperative leadership on critical matters while providing support, building confidence, and creating a model for other communities to utilize who are in the same position as we are. Your forward-thinking decision-making back in January is helping us, helping to guide us tonight, and now that the seeker process is underway, we'll have several other marks to do. So thank you all in the midst of post-elections, budgets, and other critical items for bringing this so swiftly, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Phillip Gorrery, Twenty-eight East Court, Kingston, on the ridge above the River Hudson. Once again, organic history begins in a spectacular USA 2016. Make no doubts about it, it's going to happen. And you're gonna make it happen. You got a choice, who's the public that you're representing? The People USA public? In that house, in Washington's District of Global Corporations? Or the September eleventh, nineteen forty-one, government of global corporations, government of Pentagon, that moved in on January fifteenth, nineteen forty-three, with twenty-three thousand crusaders of God, King James, First Empire's home base of the Third Reich and Fourth Reich, and today held over three hundred thousand crusaders, nine hundred-plus military bases representing the vampires of Mother Nature's blood? It's gonna cease, 2016, and cease this calendar year, period.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Great. My name is Megan Royce-Roe, I live at eleven Santa Street in Kingston, I also work for Family Woodstock, and I'm honored as part of my position, I work at the Everhodge Community Center in Midtown Kingston and have done so for the past ten years. I have been very proud of our work at the Hodge Center over the past ten years. We have accomplished many different things, and particularly in the past three to four years, we're closer to the Kingston Parks and Recreation. As a city-owned building, I have appreciated the investment the City of Kingston has made to its residents, to its families, and to its children, by recognizing that it is the city's responsibility to take care of its building and to take care of its residents. And so I wanted to go over a couple of facts first, which is that one of my responsibilities is I helped coordinate youth programming after school and during the summertime for children that frequent the Everhodge Community Center, and because we are taking care of children, there are certain requirements that we must meet in order to care for them both legally, safely, and responsibly. And so we are mandated by child-staff ratios in order for us to operate. And so these are child-staff ratios that are required by New York State Department of Health. These ratios include, if you're caring for five-year-old youth, there has to be a ratio of one to nine, meaning that if you have nine five-year-olds, you must have one staff. If you have ten five-year-olds, you must have an additional staff person. So for one, for five-year-olds, it's a ratio from one to nine. If it's six- or nine-year-olds, it's a ratio of ten to one, and if it's twelve- or twelve-year-olds, it is a ratio of fifteen to one. At the Everhodge Community Center, we serve children as young as five and as old as seventeen. And so as you can imagine, every single one of these staff make it that we can open the doors, they make it that we could do our job safely and legally and responsibly. And so I'm coming here tonight, we don't come here very often to ask a lot, you know, I don't believe, but I'm coming tonight because I agree with what the other speaker said, which is there's a lot of need. But you have recognized the need at Everhodge Center, you have responded, and we are asking that you continue to respond, because the need that we have here has not been completely met, and we are trying, and we are on a great path, but we need your help. And the first thing is to make sure that we are meeting these staff-to-child ratios so we can do that job. So that's the first piece, which is really more of the logistical part. The other piece is that at Family Woodstock, we're very proud of the investment that we've made at the Everhodge Center, we're very proud of the programs that we can do, the partners that we can work with, and certainly on a personal note, it is a very meaningful job that I have, and I appreciate the honor to work there. We have invested in our own fundraising efforts, in both爱心 and actually cash on hand through grant writing and through fundraising, nearly thirty thousand dollars per year to make sure that Everhodge Community Center operates. And so we are at a place that we are going to continue to make that investment, we are seeking grant funds every day, I work with my supervisor every day to write grants, but we can't, we don't have any more capacity to find more money. And so at this time, to remove money from the Hodge Center and move staffing from the Hodge Center would be a great burden, a burden that unfortunately I don't know if we would be able to handle. Lastly, and this is mostly on a programming end of things, a previous speaker had mentioned that there's zero value to the positions associated with this budget through Parks and Recreation. I certainly disagree with that. I think that we would be happy to bring other people and many children and families, I'd also disagree with that. But when we talk about where there is value, there is value in teaching children about personal responsibility, there's value about teaching children about compassion, there's value about teaching children about kindness and family and community, there's value about teaching children that there's hope, there's value about teaching children that they can have a belief in their future, and with partners like Read and Write, with partners like other nonprofits and volunteers, that they can have a future, there's value in that, and there's value in keeping the doors open. And so I respectfully ask that you restore the positions so we can meet our staff-to-child ratios and do what I think will be operating, which is at least meet some of the need, and work together strategically to find other ways to meet the great need, because I know that we all care about our children, and so let's invest in our children.
My name is Alisa Law, and my current residence is two-five-eight-five-two-oh-nine. I no longer reside in the City of Kingston, but I still own three houses here, so I have a tremendous amount of taxes. I came here for a few things. I want to say thank you to all of you who worked so hard in the Finance Committee to prepare your own budget, and I want to encourage you to pass that budget here tonight, and I want to speak particularly about the programs that are offered with the help of the Environmental Education position. I was born and raised here in the City of Kingston, and I have raised four children here in the City of Kingston. Growing up here, I never, to this day, I have never kayaked in an hour of waterfront, but my kids have because of the program that is available to them. Growing up, the Foresight Park didn't have a nature center. We had a bear, whose name was Smokey, who lived in a ten-by-ten cage for twenty-five years, that's what the attraction was. We didn't have the Foresight Nature Center with all these educational programs that we have now, that children and families come from all over the county to participate in the programs that are offered to them. These are invaluable opportunities that we have here, and these are the things that are moving us forward. I too want to talk about the Hodge Center. There's been a lot of talk tonight about the wonderful educational programs that are offered for the children in the Hodge Center, and that is correct, but you should know that the educational opportunities at the Hodge Center are not just for children. I worked for Ulster OSIS and were an adult in education, I've worked at the Hodge Center over the past eight years. I am there every Monday from eight a.m. until eight p.m., so I am well aware of all of the programs that are offered there. There are seven days a week, there are programs going on at the Hodge Center, and it's not just for children. We have free high-school equivalency classes, they used to be called GEDs, no longer GED. There are free classes for adults in the community, free classes to teach adults to speak English. Last night, we had three new students come in who didn't speak a single word of English, but they knew from talking to people in the neighborhood to go to the Hodge Center, and they showed up. The programs go beyond just education, there is free counseling that's offered to any individual who walks into the Hodge Center. So if an adult comes in and needs to find a form of health care for their family, we make an appointment with them with the health care navigators, so that they can have a health care provider for the children that they can afford to go to without having to go to the emergency room. We offer guidance and help to adults who come in who want to become citizens, so they don't have nowhere else to go, they go to the Hodge Center. So I'm asking you to please really think about your role tonight, think about how it affects everyone in our community. It is a very important decision that you're making, and thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you for this opportunity to talk to you tonight. I want to say thank you to the City of Kingston for going on record, for favoring the New York State D E C to be the lead agency in investigating the proposed Pilgrim Pipeline. Thank you very much. I also want to say that the Ulster County Youth Bureau, in its effort to strengthen the lives of young people and to prepare them to take their place as adults, and numerous agencies are working to break the cradle or school-to-prison pipeline. For the City of Kingston, one way we can break the school-or-cradle-to-prison pipeline is for the City of Kingston to continue to support the Read and Write Program that has successfully taught children how to read here in Kingston. I urge the Common Counsel to include in its budget sufficient money to fund the continuing operations of the successful Read and Write Program. And my third item is, I want to say that the budget is before the council this evening. I wish to lend my support for the budget that is prepared, just the way it is tonight. The Finance Committee put in many hours of hard diligent work, they came up with a budget that is workable, sensible, doable. The committee who prepared the budget made every effort to save money and to restore important programs that were cut. Last night at the caucus meeting, I saw the aldermen at work together to tweak the budget to be realistic and doable. The budget serves, as it is right here tonight, the proposed budget serves the people of Kingston. I urge you, aldermen, tonight, to vote to support the budget and to support the City of Kingston. And I am confident that the Common Counsel will continue to make efforts to save the successful programs that benefit the residents of Kingston, programs like the Read and Write Program. I have confidence that the city will work its best to save programs like the work Read and Write Program. So my wish is to please pass the budget this evening, it will be a blessing for the City of Kingston if you will all vote for the budget. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. That concludes the speakers at that side. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council at this
Hi, my name is Jennifer Metzger, and I'm town councilwoman in the town of Rosendale, twenty-two Mountain Road in Rosendale. And this is just a quick note to say that I am here and with you in spirit, I'm really excited that you are making this move tonight to support the D E C as lead agency in the Pilgrim Pipeline Project Secret Review. We'll be doing the exact same thing tomorrow night in Rosendale, the Lead Plaid Committee will be taking the similar action in other towns in Ulster County. And I just want to say it's just the first step, and I hope we can all, we're an involved agency, you're an involved agency, and the other involved agencies in Ulster County can work together and be, and take a very serious, rigorous, and in-depth, involved approach to the Secret Review. And ultimately, we're gonna have to weigh in, I think, at the very top in the governor's office and get this stopped altogether. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, Jennifer Schwartz-Burkey, thirty-five Holm Street, Kingston, New York. I am the legislator-elect for District Seven of Ulster County, which includes three wards in Kingston, and I'm also a proud member of KingstonCitizens.org. Just wanted to thank you very much for your enthusiastic embrace of this issue, the Pilgrim Pipeline. I think what Kingston Citizens has proven is that we are no longer going to accept deals that are made behind closed doors, that don't include the public, and that don't involve an informed decision-making process. It's fairly clear that there's some serious conflicts for the Thruway Authority being the lead agency of this project, and there's a lot at stake here, so I thank you for taking the leadership on that. I'd also just like to say that in my experience of the environmental programs, and having worked with environmental groups on a number of things, including environmental literacy, environmental education, having witnessed the Hodge Program, and having seen the Foresight Center Program at work, in which so many parents, who I know, would rather send their kids there than almost any other summer camp. It's affordable, it is accessible to people of every income level, and it's very clear that our investment in these kinds of programs are going to reduce dependence on the system later in life, reduce dropout rates, and increase children's ability to be analytical, cooperative, and to become good citizens. We have to start early, and we have to support these programs. So thank you very much for your support. So, thank you very much for your support. And I hope that you will consider what the other speakers have urged you to do in terms of supporting and even reinstating some of these programs. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Rachel Martin-Havens. I live in Woodstock, New York. I am a member of Kingston Citizens Board. And I first stood in this room just about a year ago regarding the Niagara model issue. And I want to thank you for all of your support on that. And as well, I'd like to just reiterate what Jenny and Benny and people said here. I'm just a tiny bit confused because I haven't seen the budget, and it's not really my business, because this isn't my city. But from what I'm hearing this evening and from what I, little bit that I got, it looks like there may be on this budget some funding for the Read and Write program that I'm hearing about. I would like to ask you to shift a little more into that pile. Because we're talking about pipelines. That school or cradle, as you said, to prison pipeline is real. And we need to think about that, and we need to think about the kids all over Kingston, not just in certain parts of Kingston. So, let's think about the brown lives. I'm not saying it, but there I said it.
My name is Keith White, at 160 O'Neil Street. I'd like to compliment what people have spoken so far tonight. I think that it's important that these young children come to speak. I think that's a real compliment to the adults who are leading them and to them who have the purpose to come and speak. You don't have to agree, but it's important that you practice the process. And I think that's really, not that I disagree, I just think that it's important that they just come. I'd like to say that I hope that all of you that have faith, that you use that faith this year, and you try to increase your strength and your faith. I think that a lot of these issues that we've gotten here today would take care, help, improve, and be much better addressed, besides adding money to them, besides our efforts, if we had a lot more faith we got, because that truly does what we need to come from. And those of you that have faith, I would hope that you lean today and in these other days and use that to judge your conscience, use it to address yourself. When you're in a room by yourself, ask yourself, am I gonna make the right decision? Am I gonna stand by those decisions when I'm in the public? It's important to do the right thing, as you say. You may not agree, but if you address and try to do the right thing, I think you do the best. That's all, that's why. I'm here today to talk about the budget. In particular, not what's in it, but what's not in it. We all have a debt to pay, we know we have a debt to pay. And there's no line on it for it, and I'm talking about Chris Wray. Chris Wray is the assistant chief that was basically accused of wrongdoing and he's proven his innocence over and over and over again. I think we all feel, and I think it helped lead us to the new mayor. Definitely one of the issues that I think people didn't want to have go on, and that was the, I call it the persecution rather than the prostitution of Chris Wray. Prosecution was not possible because he's innocent, he's proven his innocence. We all believe in the Constitution of the United States, which I sure hope we do, because we're here. Then you're innocent till you prove him guilty, and this man has proven his innocence. So, when you not believe he's innocent, you can't accuse him because he is innocent, because he proved it. So, we have a debt to pay to him, we have financial debt to pay to him. I think we also have a spiritual debt to pay to him. But the financial debt you're responsible for, and that financial debt is gonna be his back pay, his back benefits, and all of those things that you've already been ordered to pay. You've already been told that you're gonna have to do it. And it's all been installed and delayed, and all those processes that go on, and ego's getting involved versus righteousness. So, you have a blank line, that you don't have anything in, and you fired apart the budget. And that is the assistant chief's position, which should be restored. And in that restoration should be all the current pay for another year of service, and also all his back pay, his back benefits, which you have already been ordered to pay. And you're paying nine percent per day penalty for not redoing it. And we need to set it aside sometime. My little sign in my yard today, this year, said, said this, this is my sign. "We support God with integrity, justice, and Chris Wray." And that's what I ask of all of you. This is no longer an issue whether this man is guilty or innocent, he's innocent. And he's been persecuted for four years. His family's suffered great emotional stress. He's been a true gentleman in the process, but it's time. And I'm really happy, because I think that noble and noble will do the noble thing and lead us to put Chris Wray back to work. And that the City of Kingston can apologize to him. Because it's all right for somebody to be, make an accusation if you truly believe that there's some merit behind it. I'm not questioning whether the mayor believed that he was doing the right thing. But he learned, and he learned hard, that he did the wrong thing. And he was pulled by the courts, and he kept pursuing it, he kept pushing it, because ego took over sensibility. And I want, my cynicism in government has been a little bit softened because Kingston, I think, realized that we've made the mistake four years ago, electing the wrong person. And I think this year we corrected and hired the right person. And I have some faith that we're gonna change this around. But I think you need to finance it. I think you know you gotta feel you're gonna have to pay. You're just ignoring things by not putting the number in there. And you need to put the number in the job title, whatever it is, put it in contingency. But you need to put three hundred thousand dollars or thereabouts, two fifty, three hundred thousand dollars in the budget to do what you know you've already been ordered to do. Thank you.
Good evening, it's nice to see you all. I wasn't gonna speak, but I decided I could. I'm gonna support this woman about reading and writing. I heard about her from a very good friend of mine, she knows who she is. And I want to support that too, because it's very important that children get all of that. Because I have a brother who doesn't know how to read, and he doesn't know how to write either. So, I hope that you guys decide what they have to go with that, because it's very important that children learn. And, you know, it also keeps most streets. And, you know, it's just that this woman, this woman here is doing a good thing. And I thank you. God bless.